Welcome to Arlington County Board's session this evening. Our fiscal year 2022 budget tax rate public hearing. We have a discussion tonight and mostly actually us listening to you on calendar year 2021 tax rates, fees, schedule changes, fees that are scheduled to change and code amendments. On Tuesday, we heard from many citizens, over 40 Arlington residents, on the fiscal year 2022 operating budget. Tonight, we will hear testimony on the proposed tax rates, fee schedule changes and various code amendments that would enable us to fund our budget. The board will act on the proposed budget, calendar year 2021 tax rates, fees and code amendments at the April 20th County Board recessed meeting. That's Tuesday, April 20th. But before we begin hearing public testimony from you, our residents, we will receive a brief presentation from the county manager, Mark Schwartz. Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the board. I'm going to ask Richard Stevenson to walk through a short slide presentation. Mr. Stevenson.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Manager.
I have just a few slides to highlight the revenue side of the FY 2022 budget. So for most of our county operations, this graph shows the funding sources supporting the expenditure budget. As you're all aware, real estate taxes make up the lion's share of funding, followed by personal property taxes and business license taxes. As I will show on the next slide, we've experienced some significant reductions to several of our tax revenues and non-tax fees. So we were fortunate this past January that real estate assessments came in slightly higher than we were originally projecting. While we were, while we experienced a drop in commercial property assessments, new construction and residential properties increased. For fiscal year 2022, real estate taxes rose 1.1% at the current base real estate tax rate of $1.013 per 100 of assessed value. And this is the same rate the county board advertised in February and is the highest rate that they can adopt. The county will continue to experience impacts to several other local tax revenues as a result of the economic impacts of the COVID pandemic. As you can see in this, stable sales, meals and hotel taxes are all projected to remain at levels below pre-pandemic levels, with full recovery not expected until the end of fiscal year '22 or '23, and with hotel taxes not recovering until fiscal year '23 or beyond. As I will talk about in a few minutes, B-Pole or the business license taxes are expected to be higher from our FY 22 proposed budget levels. So the pandemic has altered many things in society. Some of the adjustments to life impact how people work and play. And we anticipate that revenue generated from things like parking meters, park and recreation programs, transit revenue, and many other non-tax sources will also continue to remain at levels below those pre-pandemic, similar to the numbers I mentioned related to taxes. The proposed budget does utilize several sources of one-time revenue to balance the '22 budget, bridging us to FY 2023 when we anticipate many of the revenue streams will recover. So this is a slide I highlighted at the budget hearing on Tuesday. And what it's showing is there have been a few changes since we, a few changes that have occurred since the budget was proposed back in February. The American Rescue Plan was passed by the federal government last month, which will provide additional funds to both the county and the schools. Almost 46 million will be coming to the county over the next 14 months or so. The initial legislation lacked specificity and we were still awaiting additional guidance from the federal government in the appropriate utilization of these funds. But we do know that a number of the reductions we had to take in the proposed budget could be restored with these federal monies. And the manager will be coming back to the board and community once we know a little more information, which we expect to be later in May. This spring, we also experienced strong business license tax revenues. We weren't sure, we were unsure of the impact of this tax source since it was based on business activity in the last calendar year, one that was influenced by the impacts of the pandemic. But the strength in these tax receipts, we have slightly, with, with the strength in these tax receipts, we slightly increased our revenue assumption for fiscal year '22, allowing the board to consider some additional investments, some of which, many of which were highlighted in the Tuesday work session and I'm sure will be mentioned tonight as well. So for fiscal year 2022, as I mentioned earlier, the base real estate tax rate was advertised at the current rate of $1.013 per $100 of assessed value, and it's the highest rate that the board can adopt. There is a proposed increase to the stormwater tax rate this year. Last fall, as you recall, the board approved and the community voted for an almost $51 million bond for stormwater infrastructure. And this tax increase is necessary to pay the debt service on the repayment of those bonds once they're issued. And the rate is proposed to increase from 1.3 cents for $100 of assessed value to 1.7 cents. In addition, an increase in the cigarette taxes proposed as a result of the state legislature increasing the county's local tax authority. The increase will generate about $600,000 and almost half of that increase will go to the schools based on the adopted principles of revenue sharing for all local taxes. And we also have a number of proposed fee increases. Many of these are annual routine adjustments to keep pace with cost recovery for the particular program. For example, the household solid waste rate and the water, water sewer rate are changing to reflect projected costs. And in FY 2022, the household solid waste rate is actually decreasing slightly due to some one-time expenses in '21 that are not required in '22. And also, there are some new fees proposed for two of our new facilities opening in '22, Long Bridge Aquatics Facility and the reconstructed Lover Run Facility, along with some other fees you can see here with, associated with fire department. And then finally, wanted just to highlight the budget process, where we are here in the, along the time continuum, since the manager proposed the budget in February, concluding with budget adoption on either April 17th or the 20th recess meeting. And the new fiscal year will begin on July 1st. And so with that, I will turn it back over to the clerk or chair for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Stevenson. For just a little additional background for those listening, the board will, will just be listening tonight. We will have a work session next Tuesday afternoon. And we will, the following Tuesday will be the 20th when we will adopt the budget. We are also slated for a work session next Thursday afternoon. So for discussion, next Tuesday and Thursday are the days when we will be working through, marking up the budget. For tonight, though, we are in listening mode. You're listening to your concerns and we're ready to hear from our public speakers. First, just a couple of housekeeping items to keep in mind as you're journeying, joining us tonight and speaking. Their clerk will begin to call speakers two at a time, beginning with the pre-registered two-minute speakers, followed by the pre-registered three-minute speakers. We'll then hear from anyone that has registered after the start of the meeting at 7:00 PM in order by two and three-minute intervals. Speaker sign-up will be available online at www-countyboard.ArlingtonVA.us or by phone at 571-397-1863 until 8:00 PM. Please keep your microphones muted and your cameras off until you are called to speak. The moderator can mute you but cannot unmute you. If you're calling in by phone, press star six to unmute. If you're using a computer browser or app, click the microphone button on the toolbar. You are not required to turn on your camera when speaking, but may if you like. Listen to the tone to indicate when your time speaking has elapsed. A Spanish language interpreter is on the line, I believe, if needed for individual testimony only. Would you introduce yourself?
Good evening, everyone. Spanish interpreter Laura Castro. Buenas tardes a todos. Intérprete español Laura Castro.
Gracias, Ms. Castro. Thank you. Repetitious testimony is discouraged. Feel free, if you like, to simply associate yourself with previous remarks. After speaking, you may exit the call and can continue to participate in the meeting via the live stream at ArlingtonVA.us or cable channels Comcast 25 and 1085 and Verizon FiOS channels 39 and 40. Those wishing to submit written statements instead of oral presentations may do so at any time by email to countyboard@ArlingtonVA.us. Madam Clerk, will you please call the first two speakers?
Yes, our first speaker is Audrey Clement, followed by Joan McIntyre.
Ms. Clement.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Audrey Clement, the independent candidate for county board. Welcome, members of the board and the county manager. I'm running for county board again because Arlington taxes are slated to go up again, even as tax rates are going down elsewhere in Northern Virginia. Fairfax County has proposed a one-cent tax rate reduction, Alexandria a two-cent reduction, Manassas and Loudoun County each a three-cent reduction. The impetus for tax rate reductions elsewhere in Northern Virginia is to provide relief to homeowners hit by rising assessments, even as the pandemic has put a lot of them out of work. Despite its social justice rhetoric, Arlington has shown no inclination to follow its neighbors' lead in cutting tax rates. According to the county manager's proposed budget, residential real estate taxes are slated to go up by 6% or an average of $420 per year due to rising assessments and a stormwater tax rate increase of 38%. That's remarkable, even in a county where the average annual effective real estate tax rate increase, 4%, has been more than twice the rate of inflation, 1.7% for the past 10 years. The county will tell you that it can't afford to reduce the real estate tax rate because the pandemic has drained tax revenue from the commercial sector. But where were your real estate taxes heading when the county was flush with tax revenue from leading corporate tenants? They were going up at more than twice the rate of inflation. Let's face it, Virginia. Arlington County Board's policy on real estate tax rate increases is simple. It's whatever the market will bear. If that doesn't suit you, then up and out, and so much for equity, diversity and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clement.
Our next speaker is Joan McIntyre, followed by William Barrett.
Ms. McIntyre.
Good evening. I'm Joan McIntyre, speaking on behalf of the Climate Change, Energy and Environment Commission. We have only a few comments related to the proposed changes in revenue included in the FY 22 budget. We are excited that the Solid Waste Bureau has finally began curbside collection of food scraps for composting late this year and pleased that the county is able to do so while slightly lowering the household solid waste rate. Food scraps collection will divert a significant portion from the trash stream and is another step towards the county's zero-waste goal. While not in the budget, we welcome the county board's commitment to adopting a plastic bag fee as soon as feasible. We endorse the planned increase in the stormwater rate as an interim step to securing the necessary funding to address the county's aging stormwater infrastructure and mitigate flooding from the already increasing intensity of storms. Moving forward, we support the county's efforts to move to a stormwater utility to shift the financial burden to properties with more impervious surfaces and thus contributing more to stormwater runoff. This will also provide opportunities to offer property owners incentives to reduce impervious surfaces, protect and expand tree canopy, and otherwise incorporate nature-based solutions for onsite water retention. Finally, we support the proposed change in the formula for water and sewer rate as being a good balance between affordability and promoting water conservation. In line with our comments on Tuesday's budget hearing calling for a whole-of-government approach to climate change and other environmental challenges, we urge the county to consider how various taxes and fees can be used to incentivize businesses and residents who can reduce greenhouse gas emissions and otherwise take steps to improve the county's air, water and open spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McIntyre.
Our next speaker is William Barrett, followed by Cindy Nelson.
Mr. Barrett.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I live in Blumenton, I'm a member of the Blumenton Civic Association. So I would first refer you to the resolution that the Blumenton Civic Association passed, encouraging the board to reduce the tax rate in order not to force a tax increase on homeowners. And I'd like to speak a little more specifically about some of the, the other tax issues that affect me personally. Of course, the real estate tax is the big one. And my assessment, my wife and I, with our two daughters, live in a small, two-bedroom house. And we've seen over 15% increase in our taxes, which would be, you know, even, growing even, even more with the current proposal from the, the county board. We've also seen other taxes hit us. So there is a utility tax that was put in several years ago and it, it ramps up according to your energy usage. But like I said, we live in a small, two-bedroom house, which is well insulated and we, we keep our thermostat pretty low in the winter and, you know, pretty high in the summer. And it seems like almost every month we still get hit with the maximum $3 on our gas bill and $3 on our power bill for a total of $72 almost every year. So it's not really encouraging energy savings. It's just punishing everyone who's not living in a tiny apartment. I'd also like to bring the county board's attention to the, the registration fee for cars. Since they're not even a decal anymore, we're paying $33. What, it's essentially a tax. We're not receiving any value as residents, you know, in exchange for that tax. It's not really clear where it's going. So I think if you're going to charge a tax, may as well roll it into something that is actually a tax that people can put on their, on their federal income tax return and get a deduction for. So overall, I just feel like the, the tax burden has gotten really heavy. And for people like me who like to stay in our homes, it makes it harder and harder every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Our next speaker is Cindy Nelson, but I do not believe she is with us.
I am. I can hardly really, how are you?
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning. Good afternoon. Sorry. I spoke at Tuesday's meeting and I was honored to speak at this meeting as well. And I, like Mr. Barrett, noticed overwhelming the tax for, like Arlington County for proposing a lot of our residents. And I wish that they received these a little bit back, especially in the time of the pandemic. I don't think this is a wise idea. With everybody suffering, poor and rich.
Ms. Nelson.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
We're getting a little bit of an echo. Is there a chance you have two, you have two devices on?
No, sir. I'm so sorry.
Okay, you're a little better now. We'll see if we can, can hear you. We just want to make sure we hear what you're sharing with us.
Oh, yes, sir. I'm so sorry. So I was just picking up on Mr. Barrett, what he was saying regarding the tax burden for Arlington residents. It would be nice if Arlington, please rolled that back a little bit. And I just, not right now in the era of a pandemic, it's just not right. I also, against the tax proposal for stormwater, as I mentioned on Tuesday. I, you know, Arlington County has known about the stormwater flooding issue for a decade at least. And, you know, it's nice that you guys are going to find the address at the county ward, but, you know, your predecessors didn't address it and they put it on the back burner. And it's enough is enough. I mean, it needs to be addressed. But with that being said, you guys, Arlington County rather, did collect $51 million in the fall and I think that's enough for stormwater. I don't think you need to do that for homeowners. We should be supporting this proposal. This affects everyone. So if you're needing the money, you need more money beyond $51 million in your pocket. I think you need to tax everyone. Don't tax the homeowners. Just because we're a homeowner doesn't mean we have the funds to support this. You know, there's a lot of us who are on the edge of losing our jobs and don't have the job security and we're cutting back on costs of what now. And this is just not the time to be doing this. So please, Arlington County Board, please hold back. This tax proposal is just not right. Also, what Mr. Barrett was saying about these increased taxes on residents, you know, our house values have gone up through the roof and yet we're still paying more in real estate taxes. It just doesn't seem right right now. Arlington, I think you need to find more money, more funds, more resources. I'm an accountant. Somebody needs to go back there, in my opinion, in your accounting office. And then your accounting office will look for additional funding, like the gentleman pointed out on Tuesday. There was $10 million for mowing. I believe there's other things in that budget that need to be cut back. More housing, I mean, we're all suffering with housing right now. So also, I think with the proposal for the $15, yeah, $17 minimum wage, I think that's just too much right now. You need to roll that back. It's kind of like a slap in the face for those who do not have jobs right now. And yet you're increasing wages. That's just not right for Arlington. That doesn't come across right. So, you know, you're increasing benefits right now when people don't even have benefits. So that just seems counterintuitive. You just can't do that right now. It's just not the time. We needed to put that on the back burner and freeze those increases, in my opinion. Okay? And one other thing is, I don't think there should be a Juneteenth holiday and you're making taxpayers pay more money for another holiday that benefits county employees when people don't have money. You know, it's not a special holiday yet. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is that all the speakers we have signed up at this point?
Yes, it is.
Got it. So colleagues, and I believe, Madam Clerk, as I mentioned earlier, we will keep the opportunity to speak open until 8 o'clock. So if you can stay close. But for now, we will hold off and we will resume hearing speakers at 8 o'clock unless we, I hear differently from Madam Clerk. So for now, we'll be in a short recess until 8:00 PM.
Arlington County Board back in session to conclude this tax rate public hearing. We had several speakers earlier this evening, but none, am I right, Madam Clerk, that no additional speakers signed up in the last 40 minutes or so?
That is correct.
Good. With that, then I will make a motion that we close this hearing on the tax rate for calendar year 2021 related to the fiscal year 2022 budget. And I did hear a second. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
I'm sorry, Chairman DiVeratti?
Yes.
Ms. Garvey?
Aye.
Ms. Crystal?
Yes.
Mr. Karen Tonis?
Yes.
Mr. Dorsey?
Aye.
With that, and we have all voted 5-0 to close the hearing on the tax rate. With that, we have no more business to come before the board this evening, and we will be adjourned. Thanks so much.